We all here? Okay. Okay, can I call the meeting to order, please? Okay, 6:02, want to call the meeting to order. I want to say welcome to the Monday, May 5th, Common Council Meeting for the City of St. John. And this evening, we're going to start off like we always do with a land acknowledgement, and Counselor Stewart's going to read that for us this evening.
The land on which the City of St. John, or Mennequest, is situated is the traditional territory of the Lewistowic. The Lewistowic, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq and the Peskotomacate, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let's take a moment to pause and reflect.
Can I ask everyone to stand, please, while we... for the National Anthem? Okay, welcome, everyone, this evening. City Clerk, over to you for the next item.
Thank you, your worship. Next item on the agenda is 2.1, Approval of the Minutes of April the 22nd.
Deputy and Counselor Darling, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is the approval of the agenda, and there are a few additions from Committee of the Whole. Those would be 17.1, Civic Recognition Award; 17.2, Appointments to Committees; 17.3, Consent to Assign Grant Agreements; 99 King; and 17.4, Extension of Conditions on Sale of 324 Charlotte Street.
I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Stewart and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is Disclosures of Conflict of Interest, if we have any.
Not seeing any. Next item.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you for consent, please.
Thank you, your worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.4, but I'd have a comment on 5.3.
Okay. Seconders, Counselor Sullivan. Go ahead, deputy.
Okay. Just on 5.3, I would ask, is there going to be any public notification of this before those cannons go off? Because Fort Alphardt is right behind them.
Curtis Langel, are you... Oh, is he on the screen? Okay. Here we go. Mr. Langel, over.
Hello, deputy, yes. Yes, I have notified our Communications Department, and they will be putting something out to let the public know about what will be happening.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I've got my mover and a seconder? We have a seconder on that? Yeah. Okay, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is Members' Comments.
Members' Comments. Counselor Sullivan, you're up first.
Just a couple of notes of thanks to... First, the Violet Festival at Public Gardens this past weekend. Fantastic, the number of people who were out there in iffy weather conditions. It only cost my family a tray of flowers and a visit to Canadian Tire for a couple of planters. But it was well-run and just great timing. You know, sometimes you forget some of the hidden gems that we have, and our Public Gardens is certainly one of them. And also, just a shout-out to the Ukrainian community. For those who had a chance to visit Exhibition Park on Saturday, the festival put on between the flea market that they had and the festival that was going on, it was a fantastic time, and I hope it becomes a regular event. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, actually, Red Dress Day is taking place at the Boys and Girls Club tomorrow at 12:00 noon. And I wanted to mention that it is Asian Heritage Month. Hope everybody gets to join in on some of the celebrations. There's a whole calendar events. I would recommend going to the Asian Heritage Society Facebook page to find them, but they're doing badminton tournament this year, Asian Culinary Workshop, they have an art exhibit, and Anti-Racism Day, multicultural market, and then they have their closing ceremonies and gala at the end. It's quite nice. They put on some really great events. I also just wanted to make mention, I promised one of my residents that I would ask people to please stop feeding wild animals. It's actually extremely important. It is actually against a city bylaw, but the other thing is, is that wild animals become very dependent on that, and after a while, they'll stop looking for their own resources in nature. So please stop feeding wild animals.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Norton, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Had the pleasure. It was uptown on the weekend, and our St. John Free Public Library had lots going on. Anyways, on my trek to my destination, I had the opportunity, walked by a former student, Gemma Marr, and she's hanging out with good company, Julia Wright. Anyways, many of you would be familiar with Julia's latest publication. I think there's a series of these. This is the first one. It's called "It's Burning Off." They're all called that, but the reason why I selected this one is because it's all good news. And it's interesting, you... I know through Lisa Casey and our comms team, we get kind of a good news weekly update before council, and so I'm here with two pieces of good news. One from Julia Wright, that is just stories, feel-good stories about St. John, and there's a number of them. There's no shortage of them, much like the fog that's often burning off. But I guess, thank you to Gemma and Julia Wright for putting together a fabulous collection. Says free on it, but I'm sure that they'd be thankful for a generous donation, and it's quick reads. They're good, and something that we can all take a little bit of pride in after we read the story. So thank you to those ladies for doing what they are doing and promoting St. John in such a positive way.
Thank you, Counselor Norton, and thanks for bringing that forward. I love that. Counsel... Sorry, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I'd like to thank the community at the Old North End, Nick DeColle Center. We did a community cleanup on Friday, and the place looks a whole lot better. And all those volunteers that go out in the different communities, thank you very much. You're here, what helps us keep St. John looking good. And I was pleased to step in for the mayor yesterday, for the 80th anniversary of the Battle of the Atlantic. I didn't realize up until that ceremony just how many ships went down in that battle. It was incredible. And regardless of the weather, we had a great turnout. It was the first time it was held on Harbour Passage in front of the War Memorial, and so I'm just very pleased I was able to do that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Okay. Today is Red Dress Day, and it's a day to honor the missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls and Two-Spirit people taken too soon. This day serves as a powerful reminder of the ongoing pain felt by families and communities across Canada. And here in St. John, traditionally known as Mennequest, we stand with the Wabanaki and Indigenous communities committed to raising awareness and advocating for change. A red dress display at the St. John City Market honors those who have been lost, serving as both a reminder of the crisis and a call for justice. I encourage everyone to join us tomorrow at noon at the BGC Greater St. John, and that's at 1 Paul Harris Street for an awareness gathering hosted in partnership with the City of St. John. The event will feature Natasha Ward, Mennepanagadi, and the Mi'kmaq First Nation and drummer, Connor McFarlane of Flying Dust Cree Nation. I also wanted to mention that on Saturday evening, I was at the UCT United Commercial Travelers Jack Kidd Celebratory 75th Anniversary, and they do so much good work. I mean, since I've been... I had no idea who they were until I got on council, but after getting on council, I would often go to all sorts of events, and there'd be this giant check from UCT Jack Kidd. And so I got to meet quite a few of the crew on Saturday night. It was really, it was a lot of fun. But over the last 20 years, they've given over $5 million to the City of St. John through different nonprofits and helped out in a lot of things. So they do a lot of good work, and so it was a great honor to be there with them. I just wanted to mention as well that some of you may remember Vijay Quatra. He managed the Hilton for a long time. He died yesterday, and his daughter, Michelle, she put a little post on Facebook, so I wanted to send my condolences on behalf of council to her and her son Logan and her two twin boys. They'll really miss Vijay because he was very, very engaged with the boys and had a wonderful relationship as a grandparent with them, spent a lot of time with them, and did a lot of things with them. So I send our condolences to her and her family. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I have to read this off my phone because I left, I walked it without my notes today. I just wanted to briefly talk about Pope Francis. So he died on Easter Monday, and he'd been inaugurated as the Pope April 13th of 2013, and he died April 21st of 2025. He was the head of the Catholic Church and also the sovereign of the Vatican City state. He lived the values of the gospel. He was a friend of the poor and the most marginalized people. He didn't live in the Apostolic Palace. He lived in the Casa Santa Maria. In 1957, he'd had a portion of his lung removed due to quite a severe infection of the lung, and in those days, I guess that's what they would have done. He was the first Pope to be a Jesuit, and he was the first one to be from Latin America. He was the first Pope from the Southern Hemisphere and the first one born or raised outside of Europe since the 8th century Syrian Pope Gregory III. He is noted for his humility. He had concerns for the poor migrants and refugees. He wanted the Church to demonstrate more inclusivity with the LGBTQ2SI groups in that community. He spoke about climate change. He spoke about capital punishment. He was a critic of trickle-down economics and consumerism. He supported the decriminalization of homosexuality, and he... I can't read my own writing here. He apologized on behalf of the... for the Church's role in the cultural genocide of Canadian Indigenous peoples who were in residential schools as well. And he condemned Israel's military operations in Gaza, stating they were war crimes and they needed to be investigated. So he's quite the Pope. He was the most, I guess, engaged Pope I remember in my lifetime. I've been a Catholic and always, you know, hearing about the Pope, so it'll be interesting to see what the... who the conclave decides on, but he was... I found him to be, like I said, someone who lived the values of the gospel and someone who was a real leader, not only a spiritual leader, but a leader in the community as well. Okay. City Clerk, next item.
Next, we have Proclamations. The first one is Item 7.1, Moose Hide Campaign Day, May 15th.
Moose Hide Campaign. Whereas the Moose Hide Campaign is an Indigenous-led grassroots movement of men, boys, and all Canadians standing up to end violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum. And whereas the Moose Hide Campaign was founded along the Highway of Tears in British Columbia in response to the injustices and violence faced by many women and children in Canada, particularly those who are Indigenous. And whereas intimer partner violence, IPV, is at epidemic proportions across Canada with more than 1 in 4 women having experienced in their lifetimes, and this reality is worse for Indigenous women who are twice as likely to experience violence from their current or former partners. And whereas the Moose Hide Campaign has distributed over 5 million Moose Hide pins that each spark five conversations about issues of violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum. And whereas wearing the Moose Hide pin demonstrates a commitment to honor, respect, and protect the women and children in your life and gender-based violence, and take meaningful action towards reconciliation with Indigenous peoples. And whereas participation in the Moose Hide Campaign is a concrete action for all citizens to address the legacies of colonization, residential schools, and the reality of more than 1,200 missing or murdered women in Canada. And whereas engagement with the Moose Hide Campaign aligns with the United Nations Declaration on the Right of Indigenous Peoples, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's call for actions, and the calls for justice of the National Inquiry into Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Dreerden of St. John, do hereby declare Thursday, May 15th, 2025, as Moose Hide Campaign Day in the City of St. John. So you'll see these little squares of Moose Hide being worn by people around the city, and this month of May is important to this campaign. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is another proclamation, Item 7.2 on your agenda, and it's for National Police Week, May 11th to 17th.
Whereas the Government of Canada recognizes the week of May 11 to 17, 2025, as National Police Week. And whereas the St. John Police will be recognized as providing exemplary leadership and service reflective of the public safety needs of the community to enhance the quality of life. And whereas the St. John Police has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement body which increasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas every day, our law enforcement officers rendered dedicated service to our community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, responsibilities of their police force, recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Dreerden of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11 to 17, 2025, as National Police Week in honor of those whose dedication, professionalism, and significant daily contribution keep our citizens and communities safe. Next item, City Clerk.
And next is one more proclamation, Item 17.3 on your agenda, and this is for Public Works Week, May 18th to 24th.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of St. John. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in St. John to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week. And whereas all citizens are urged to join with representatives of the Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Dreerden of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 to 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of St. John. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. We're not quite at 6:30, so I would recommend we skip over to consideration of bylaws under item 10.
Okay. Next item, then.
So the first of those is 10.1, A Public Presentation on a Proposed Municipal Plan Amendment for 1384 Latimore Lake Road.
Passing this over to Commissioner Pofimroff to read.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. For council's information, a public presentation is a procedural requirement under the Provincial Community Planning Act for municipal plan amendment applications. This evening's public presentation for a site located at 1384 Latimore Lake Road, which is identified as PID 55203095, commences a 30-day public review period during which members of the public may provide written submissions on the application as an early step in the process. Any submissions received will come back to council following the close of the 30-day public review period for consideration before moving forward in the process. Following the 30-day public review period, it is anticipated that on June 16th, 2025, Common Council will refer the application to the Planning Advisory Committee for review and recommendation. Given this, the application is tentatively scheduled for the June 17th, 2025, Planning Advisory Committee meeting and public hearing at the Council, Common Council meeting of July 7th, 2025. With that as an introduction, I will now read into the public record a copy of the public notice that commences the 30-day public review period, and you can see on the screen the location of the subject property. Public notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of St. John intends to consider an amendment to the Municipal Development Plan that would, 1, redesignate on Schedule A of the Municipal Development Plan, land having an approximate area of 3.85 hectares, located at 1384 Latimore Lake Road, also identified as part of PID 55203095, from rural resource area and park and natural area to stable area as illustrated. And 2, redesignate on Schedule B of the Municipal Development Plan, land having an approximate area of 3.85 hectares, located at 1384 Latimore Lake Road, also identified as part of PID 55203095, from rural resource and park and natural area to rural residential as illustrated. This is to allow for the construction of a land-lease mini-home park. Written objections to the proposed amendment may be made to council by June 4th, and inquiries may be made to the Office of the City Clerk or Growth and Community Services in City Hall between 8:30 and 4:30 Monday through Friday. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, we have another public presentation, Item 10.2 on your agenda, and this is for Proposed Municipal Plan, Ethos Ridge, 500 Pelton Road.
Over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, your worship. This evening's second public presentation is for a site located at 500 Pelton Road, which is identified as PID 55238471, and is also known as Ethos Ridge, commences a 30-day public review period during which the members of the public may provide written submissions on the application as an early step in the process. Any submissions received will come back to council following the close of the 30-day public review period for consideration before moving forward in the process. Following the 30-day public review period is anticipated that on June 16th, 2025, Common Council will refer the application to the Planning Advisory Committee for review and recommendation. Given this, the application is tentatively scheduled for the June 17th, Planning Advisory Committee meeting and public hearing at the Common Council meeting of July 7th. With that as an introduction, I will now read into the public record a copy of the public notice that commences the 30-day public review period, and you can see on the screen the location of the subject property. Public notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of St. John intends to consider an amendment to the Municipal Development Plan that would redesignate on Schedule B of the Municipal Development Plan, land having an approximate area of 84.6 hectares, located at 500 Pelton Road, also identified as PID 55238471, from major community facility to stable residential. This is to permit the development of a residential neighborhood consisting of six town homes and eight semi-detached homes. Written objections to the proposed amendment may be made to council by June 4th, and inquiries may be made to the Office of the City Clerk or Growth and Community Services in City Hall between 8:30 and 4:30 Monday through Friday. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Redwan, I see you have your light on, but this is just being read into the public record. That's it.
I understand, Mayor. I just have a question. I just want to confirm with Commissioner Pofimroff, since this is the first... I just want to confirm with Commissioner Pofmroff, since this is the first, these items, 10.1 and 10.2, they'd be going to PAC around mid-June. So I just wanted to clarify, because I think there's some residents possibly here for these items in the gallery, that there would probably be information going out publicly through PAC about a week before on like the minutes for the city?
Commissioner, back to you.
Yep, through, through, Your Worship, to Counselor Redwan. So after the 30-day public review period, it comes back to council, and council then sets the date, refers it to PAC, sets the date, which PAC meeting will be, and sets the date for the public hearing.
Okay. And then, but notice, basically, information on the item for PAC normally gets put out about a week before, I think, right?
Yes.
Like publicly?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing.
The whole planning department's shaking their head, no, yes, okay, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, City Clerk? Do you have a quick one?
Yeah, this should be relatively quick. 10.3, Solid Waste Bylaw Amendment, Third Reading.
Okay.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. Before you this evening is a third reading of an amendment to the solid waste bylaw that would compel apartment owners of five or more units to register for collection of recycled materials. This would give those residents an option to recycle at no cost to those apartment owners. The work would actually be undertaken by Circular Materials under legislation for the province, and the collection would begin in November 1st of this year. That said, I'll turn it back over to the clerk for the readings, subject to your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Over to you, Clerk, for the two readings.
Yes, so two motions required in this. The first would be to approve the third reading by summary, and then after that, approve third reading by title.
Approve third reading by summary. And the deputy and Counselor Darling on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
The summary, well, the title of this bylaw is a bylaw for storage, collection, and disposal of solid waste in the city of St. John, and the summary is that circular materials is enhancing recycling accessibility for packaging and paper products by offering curbside recycling collection services for apartments and condos with more than four units. Expanding recycling options benefits the environment, extends the life of the regional landfill, and supports the city's waste-wise program. Owners of larger apartments must register in advance for circular materials to begin collecting recycling. City staff are recommending adopting the bylaw to compel more owners in St. John to register by May 31st, 2025 deadline.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
A bylaw for the storage, collection, and disposal of solid waste in the city of St. John.
Thank you. Okay, next item, City Clerk?
It's now 6:30, Your Worship, so we can transition over to public hearings, and so the first public hearing on the agenda is item 9.1, and this is for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with staff presentation and PAC report for 6 Douglas Avenue.
Commissioner, over to you for the intro.
Thank you, Worship, and members of council. This evening's first public hearing is for a rezoning that was submitted by Jill Higgins for a property located at 6 Douglas Avenue. The rezoning would enable the conversion of a former place of worship into a multi-unit residential development. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Yeva Matson, the planner on the file, for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Yeva? Thank you, and good evening. So the proposal is to rezone two lots from Neighborhood Community Facility to Urban Centre Residential to allow for the existing building and a small addition to be converted into approximately 15 to 18 residential units. This would include onsite parking stalls, a new accessible entrance, and new landscaping. The overall site does include a secondary PID that's closer to the corner of Main and Douglas that is parking at the moment. The subject property is located on Douglas Avenue in the Old North End. The area is designated as a character corridor known for its attractive mix of historic homes, which coincides with the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area. The subject site, while not designated heritage, contains a former place of worship that was built in the early 1900s. The property being rezoned has an area of approximately 611 square meters and includes the existing religious building, as well as a vacant lot to the south. The parking is on a separate lot to the north that is already appropriately zoned, which brings the total area of the development up to about 970 square meters. The proposed development would see the form of the existing building maintained, including that steeple, but would see some siding improvements, new windows, and a new entrance to the side that would be accessible. A small addition would be added to the vacant lot to the right of the church, so that's that above image, and then in the rear half, just, sorry, the addition would be just in the rear half with some parking and green space in front of it. The separate lot for parking is already paved and curb-cut as it was used for parking for the church. The site is designated as medium-to-high-density residential in the municipal plan, which supports this proposal. The site is also within the mixed-use landsdown intensification area, which encourages density. The most relevant municipal plan policy for this proposal is LU46, which directs new development and redevelopment to achieve a minimum gross residential density of 45 units per hectare. And this is calculated not by site, but as the intensification area as a whole. The proposed adaptive reuse of an institutional building to residential structure does achieve this density and helps increase the overall neighborhood density. Other relevant policy includes urban design principles for intensification areas such as UD11, which is to ensure new development and significant redevelopment is, helps enhance surrounding public realm, and this proposal represents an opportunity to support additional density while retaining that kind of community character as the proposed development does use the existing building. The site is zoned Neighborhood Community Facility, which is designed to accommodate a range of community-oriented facilities such as arenas, community centers, elementary schools, recreation facilities, and of course, places of worship like the current building once functioned as. The Urban Centre Residential Zone accommodates a wide range of serviced urban residential development in the form of townhouses, apartments, condominiums, and of course, lower-density forms such as single-family. The Urban Centre Residential Zone is also specifically intended for land that's in designated medium-to-high-density residential in the municipal plan and for in intensification areas. This means the zoning would align with the municipal plan and would support multi-unit residential. The proposal does conform to the zoning bylaw standards for the RSC zone regarding amenity space and landscaping. While a majority of the parking can also be accommodated onsite, a small staff-level variance may be needed for approximately three parking stalls, but this would generally be dealt with at the permit stage when floor plans and unit count have been finalized. And of course, variances are circulated to our internal departments for review, including parking and traffic, to determine off-site capacity. Letters were mailed out to the property owners within 100 meters of the site on April 2nd. Three letters were received as of this presentation, two in opposition and one in favor, and public notice was posted on the city website on April 14th, before PAC date on April 15th. As this proposal does align with all relevant policy, staff do recommend that common council rezone the property from Neighborhood Community Facility to Urban Centre Residential, and PAC is in alignment with this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, but just, should I check and see if Counselor Harris is gonna? Okay, for that. All right, so I'll open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal. Come on down and give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi. Sorry, I'm nervous a bit, so.
No, you just relax.
Okay, so I'm Nancy Smart, and I live on 77 Claridan Street, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to new housing, but I'm opposing to the amount of units and parking, as we live on Claridan, and it's a one-way street, and parking's already an issue. We already have parking overflowing from Douglas Avenue onto Claridan, from the townhouses that were built, to the, I think it's 12-unit building that sits at the corner, and then the new unit that would be built, that's the side unit in the picture that she was going to make the accessibility unit in, that houses three cars now from the house that's beside it, so they would lose their parking as well and be on the street somewhere. It is a high-traffic area, and we did ask at the development planning, I think they were going to do another reassessment of traffic, just because on the main street in Douglas, with all the construction going on specifically now, but you're turning left onto Douglas, and then you'd be trying to turn left again immediately, and often that area is backed up between 4 and 6. You have a crosswalk there as well, and so one of the things that I was, I tried to ask for in the planning is if the crosswalk could be moved to the other corner just for visibility purposes. I support someone in my home with autism, we've been almost hit so many times at that corner, as it is, and I've been told that it's a provincial issue, and I know because they say it's a provincial street. So I was informed that the province, I guess, is doing work on that street, but is that something that can be implemented with these changes? Like I said, I don't want to see anyone homeless, but we are a neighborhood that already struggles with parking and snow removal. The city comes every year with issues about nowhere to put snow, no one has place for their cars, and just adding more congestion. So I'm just asking the city to take that into consideration, and the amount of units that we're going to be, as she said, 15 to 18, but we were told 18 at the time.
Thank you. I'm just going to check and see, does anyone have any questions for our guest? Okay, all right, thank you. So I'm going to ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of the application. Come on down and give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for the opportunity.
We're going to get your, your name and your address, is that okay?
My name is Hamid Kodaabaksh, and I am PhD in aquaculture engineering, and also I know something about the building.
I'll have to get you to move this up a bit closer to your, yeah. We're just having a hard time hearing you. Maybe that'll work better.
Okay. And the things that I have to short time hopefully speak is about rezoning. Is it rezoning necessary? I believe yes, because the situation has changed, the city has changed, people that coming to the city has been changed, so rezoning is not a problem. And the things that I would like to emphasize is that, yes, I find something about this church that the new construction tried to keep the shape of this church, that is a good point. However, the last time that I was, a little shock to me is they're going to make 18 units in this building. I did some actually apartments, and I have a multiple rental in Main Street as well. So we have to consider here, based on my opinion, for example, affordable and rezoning immigrant, or sometimes could be a temporary case that we will see in this city. So we have to find a solution for the house, for the people. But the building is a permanent case, we cannot change it when we build it, and when it's wrong, next 10 years, the people analyze what happened today in this meeting. So we have to see what will be the face of the city after 10 years, and the position of the building, and 18 units. The things that I am not sure is, okay, for me, based on the shape that every day that I pass from the church, that building, 18 units is impossible. And how many is it? One bedroom, two bedroom? So, and if it is one bedroom, we have to see, okay, maybe 18 times 2, maybe 30-something people live in this place, parking area, and actually that church is in traffic site, and always it is some traffic jam that people, they want to go to the Douglas and go to the Main Street and go to the McDonald, whatever. And what is the size of this apartment? It is, for example, we have to talk about the people, we have actually to respect the people. If it is less than, I don't know, 500, 400 square feet, it is not usual, it is not normal for the people, and we have to see. I don't have any idea, because I don't know exactly what will be the design of this building. For me, if I am owner of this property, if I look to the income, gross income, for example, a six-unit, two-bedroom, maybe make it a gross about 80,000 and 90,000 per year, with good, if it is new, so it goes to the 1400 to 1600, or maybe higher, I don't know. But 18 units, if even we consider it is income, gross income 1,000, it's become over 200,000. And it's even, we have to see, is it fit to this size, fit to this area? And again, what will be the, I said, six, two-bedroom, we have still, they said, is nine, maybe nine, parking lot for the people, at least we have three for the guests, something else had to be considered. So I am here not to exactly say no, but I said, how we can actually make a good rezoning to be, again, to be fit and not make ugly the city beautiful, it thinks that we are looking for anywhere, ourselves, home, anywhere. So I would like to ask you and to, to look at to the real design, how will be, how, how, how is possible? For me, it's impossible to make 18 apartment in that place, in that position, but maybe the architecture maybe is a genesis, I don't know how they arrange it without changing the structure of the building. So again, thank you very much, and I, based on the things that I needed, I need to see exactly the details, how they are going to build it. That's all. Thank you.
We've got a couple of questions for you here. Counselor Ogden's up first.
Sir, what did you say you do? You own a building?
Yes.
And what did you say you do? You didn't say you're an engineer, did you?
I have a PhD in engineering in aquaculture and.
So you have a PhD in engineering, so you'd have a sense of space, certainly. I'd been in that building, a former student who owned it, and I went through it with him, and he was telling me of his plans, and I don't remember that high number, and I've lived just down the street from it, because the, the lot across the street, was that purchased too, was that in this?
The kit, in the kit, it says that there will be a piece put on, right, to the building, and it'll have 15 to 18 units in the whole piece.
No, but there's a corner lot across the street, is that?
Not across the street, no, they.
Okay, then they must have divided the land up. It was the former Charles Gorman Arena. The Charles Gorman, the skater, he had three Irving stations, and that was one of them. It was a well-known corner. So that, that is not part of this package, which I thought would have been parking, because when I saw his plan, he came to me, he had parking across the street. So that's out. So the parking that we're talking about is just on each side of the building, and I'm positive his numbers were much lower. And when I, when he gave me a tour on it, and I'm no engineer like you are, but I thought this is probably at max. So when I read this, I thought, this is too many places in one area, and then the lady talked about Claridan Street, which I'm very aware of, and it's, you know, the cars are right down, right down to the end of Douglas Street and down to the corner around Main Street. So I don't know where all the parking would be. It is a busy corner. I've sent in requests to have better sidewalks and such, because there are people who almost hit there all the time. And I know when we do the marigolds starting there and go down, we have to have, we have to bring police in, because the traffic goes so fast. And so it is a busy corner, and I think we might be.
Counselor, maybe I'll get you to direct your questions to staff when we close the public hearing.
hit there all the time. And I know when we do the marigolds starting there and go down, we have to have, we have to bring police in because the traffic goes so fast. And so it is a busy corner and I think we might be-
Counselor, maybe I'll get you to direct your questions to staff when we close the public hearing about parking, et cetera, and the numbers.
Okay. I just think the numbers, in my mind, don't jive.
Okay. Counselor Redwan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have a question for our guest?
I don't actually have a question, I just wanted to clarify, we, we have a full package in here and I wanted to tell you that the package shows eighteen units, six two-bedroom. I believe there's nine one-bedroom and then the rest are bachelor units. And then it shows what, and you can find this on the city website as well, but it shows nine parking spaces and it's on a main bus route. But you can see all the plans online, it's something that's made available to you, so I just wanted you to know that.
Actually, I am PhD engineering, but mostly in industrial, but I said, as I do the building here or something, so got some information. And I am, my job, shift work is in north of New Brunswick, so I didn't know there is online here of, sorry about that, that's why.
Oh, that's okay.
But thank you very much for actually giving me information. But again, based on the location, we have some apartments on the front of Douglas Avenue, but the approach is in Magda and other side, so almost not bothering the Main Street or Douglas. But this apartment, that this building will be exactly in the specific place. And again, I said, even if you look at and talk to somebody who is not an engineer, said about eighteen units, eighteen units, even if you go to six two-bedroom, maybe family, so you can assume how many added to the numbers if all the apartments be rented. So, and the car, people coming, going, service, garbage, for even furlough, how is come to take this? This is any place to this big truck come and take it? That means everything should be, goes to the details. And then, not now, not next year, next ten years, they will actually talk about us, how we decided, how we actually, you how you decide actually. And, but for me, that's, I am here just to say, next thing to my kids, I've been there and I said, this is not fit, that's all. So I did my job to say, I'm not opposite about the rezoning. Rezoning is important, how we proceed, how we make it, it is important, that has to be professionally analyzed.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anyone here would like to speak against the application. I'll ask again if there's anyone would like to speak against the application. I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here would like to speak against the application. I'll ask if there's anyone here would like to speak in favor of the application. Come on down and give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Jill Higgins, J. Higgins Architecture, so I'm the architect on the project. So if anyone has any questions on this project at this time, just let me know and I can answer them.
Team, do you have any questions for Jill Higgins? Counselor Sullivan's up first with a question for you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just perhaps you'd like to respond to the previous gentleman who had the concerns about the fit.
Yes, so as Paula had mentioned, there is a whole design package in the, in the minutes and agenda, so if you want to take a look at the design, it does, it will be designed to meet all codes. Since it's a full renovation, it will need to meet the National Building Code, it'll be Part Nine, since it's not Part Three building. So it'll be designed to meet the Part Nine code along with all the energy efficiency guidelines as well.
Thank you. Counselor Redwan, you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Higgins, I just wanted to check, there's a picture of the side of like what used to be the church and it almost looks like there could be maybe the extension there. I was trying to figure out, but the extension, is it just part of the main floor so it would come down lower or would it go three floors, like stories?
The addition?
Yeah.
Yeah, the addition would go three stories.
Oh, it would, okay, great. I just, so I'm thinking the side view that I see is exactly what it's going to look like with the addition.
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We're trying to keep the aesthetics of the church that's existing.
Thank you. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Jill. You're aware that we're going to be doing some work on Main Street, finally?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and the, the speeding cushions that we have down at the end of Douglas Avenue is not going to interfere with your equipment getting in and out?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and all the parking that you have is going to be off-street?
So all of our parking right now is off-street, so we have six on one side of the building and three on the other.
Okay, you just, you just answered the three questions I had, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Counselor Ogden, over to you.
The addition that you're adding, is that three apartments?
Three, yes, single-
Okay, so what I saw was just the existing building?
That's right, exactly.
Okay, and the parking issue you have solved?
So the parking right now, we will have six on one side. It will be in the exact same location as the existing parking is for the church and there will be three on the other side in front of the addition.
So you don't know anything about the, the piece of property across the street?
No, I do not.
Because there's people that park there every day now.
Right.
And so they're parking illegally.
No, that's, so that wouldn't be part of this project.
No, no, okay, thank you.
Okay, that looks like that's it for you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask again if there's anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'll ask my team if you have any questions for staff. Counselor Redwan, over to you for the first question for staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's through you to Commissioner Hughenholdt, actually. What, you know, obviously Main Street is a provincial roadway, so if we want to do any traffic calming or even put a sign up, are we needing permission from the province to do that? I just wanted to get an idea.
Through you, Your Worship, to the counselor. I guess it depends on the nature of the improvement that we're going to make.
Okay.
Certainly the work that's going to happen this year on Main Street is going to have quite an effect in terms of traffic calming, reducing lanes and introducing additional act of transportation.
Absolutely, yeah, narrowing that road is definitely going to help, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy, over to you for a question.
Thank you, Your Worship. So you, Commissioner Hughenholdt, is this, this going to have any effect on your performance in getting Main Street done this year?
I know the answer, but that has to be-
No, it should not.
It's been twelve years, I'm just asking.
Okay, I have a quick question, Eva. Is there, is there any restrictions on parking on Douglas Avenue now? Is it, is it two hours or max or no?
I don't believe so, I believe it's just regular off-street residential parking.
Okay, okay, that's an interesting thing too because I think a lot of people who park on the street probably, you know, have driveways, there's a lot of places over there that do have driveways, so that might be something to look at as well to mitigate some of the on-street traffic. All righty, appreciate it. Okay, if that's it, I'm going to send it over to the city clerk for the motions that we need this evening.
Thanks, Your Worship. In this case, we need two motions, approve first reading by title and approve second reading by title.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve first reading by title. Counselor Lowe is up and Counselor and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
All right, and I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Darling and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you. Next item, city clerk.
And next is item nine point two, and we have a second public hearing. And this is for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with a staff presentation and the PAC report, medium industrial.
Commissioner Poforov, over to you for the intro, please.
Thank you, Your Worship and members of council. This evening's second public hearing is for a text amendment to the zoning bylaw proposed by Growth and Community Services. The text amendment eliminates scrap or salvage yard as a use within the medium industrial zone. The amendment would limit the establishment of new scrap or salvage yards to sites zoned heavy industrial within the zoning bylaw. This amendment is not related to any specific site or industrial park. Rather, it's really about how the city wants to deal with scrap and salvage yards throughout the city and where this use is most appropriate. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee and included in your package is the recommendation to rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Thomas Lewallen, the planner on the file, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thomas, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. As mentioned, this amendment is seeking to remove the scrap or salvage yard use from the list of permitted uses within the medium industrial zone, which would limit scrap or salvage yards to the heavy industrial zone. Scrap or salvage yards are currently, that are currently zoned medium industrial will keep their existing zoning and be added to the exemptions list in Schedule E of the zoning bylaw. Out of five properties within St. John that are licensed by the province to operate scrap and salvage yards, only two of the properties, sixty-five Recycling Street and eighty-five Whitebone Way, are zoned medium industrial. One-twenty Patty's Hill is zoned heavy industrial, will not be affected by these changes. And nine-nine-one Fairville Boulevard and a thousand Grandview Avenue are zoned regional commercial and future development respectively, meaning they would not be able to realize a preventive licensure without a municipal plan amendment, rezoning, and an environmental impact assessment. Scrap or salvage yard is defined in the city of St. John's zoning bylaw as any land or building used for the storage, wrecking, disassembling, refurbishing, or handling of goods, machinery, or motor vehicles. May also include a recycling facility, the sale of salvage materials, or outdoor storage. While a metal shredder would be permitted under this definition as it relates to the part about wrecking and disassembling, staff are adding the term shredding to the definition to provide further clarification. When looking at the largest municipalities in New Brunswick, most restrict scrap or salvage yards to the heavy industrial zones. Screening and fencing regulations are common in the three largest cities, typically requiring opaque fences between two and five meters and prohibiting materials from being stacked higher than the fence. Setback requirements for residential areas are not commonly specified except for Woodstock, which mandates a two-hundred-meter setback. An offensive heavy industrial use is defined as in the zoning bylaw as a manufacturing process or material that generates hazardous emissions, excessive noise, vibration, unsightly storage, or other conditions harmful to health, safety, or the character of the neighborhood, such as a brewery, pulp and paper mill, or a scrap and salvage yard. This definition makes clear that scrap and salvage yards should be, the scrap and salvage yard use is intended for to be solely in the heavy industrial zone. Being defined as an offensive heavy industrial use also comes with increased setbacks and considerations in comparison to the medium industrial zone. Scrap or salvage yards inherently involves significant outdoor storage, heavy truck traffic, dismantling operations, and potential environmental hazards, making them incompatible with the intent of the medium industrial zone. Their operations align with the offensive heavy industrial zone standards by definition, where larger-scale industrial activities requiring extensive buffering from other land uses are required. Increase in setbacks required in the IM zone versus the offensive and heavy industrial zone are quite significant. The front and flangeage yards are twenty-two and a half meters greater, the side and rear yards go from seven and a half to fifteen meters, depending on the type of adjacent zoning, and the maximum lot occupancy is five percent less in the offensive heavy industrial zone, further limiting the extent with which scrap or salvage yards can operate in proximity to property lines. Letters were mailed to two affected property owners on April fourth and public notice posted on the city's website on April tenth. There were no letters received at this presentation, the public here, oh, hearing is today. PAC and staff are recommending that common council adopt the bylaw amendment CP one-one-one one-nine-three, which would amend the definition of scrap or salvage yard to include the term shredding to better reflect the abilities of the scrap or salvage yard use, amend the medium industrial zone to remove scrap or salvage yard use from the permitted, list of permitted uses, and amend Schedule E of the zoning bylaw to permit continued operation of the two scrap or salvage yards that are currently zoned medium industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I am going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this application. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application. I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. And city clerk, I'll pass it over to you for motions that are required this evening. Oh, before I do that, I need to ask, does my team have any questions for staff? I don't see any, any questions, so I'll pass it over to you for motions. Question? Oh, sorry, Counselor Lowe has a question, over to you, Counselor.
It's to-
What's going on?
Can, can a heavy industrial zone be classified and can also PAC and council put restrictions on it? Not to have scrap yards and?
Through Your Worship, yes, I think PAC and council can restrict-
PAC has done it before with council?
Yeah, yeah. Council can-
I know the answer.
Fifty-nine conditions, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Redwan, over to you for a question.
Mayor, thank you, actually, I just, I have one comment, I don't, I mean, I think that the changes are great, Thomas, so, you know, I want to be able to vote in favor of it. The only thing that I'm uncomfortable with is the height of the fence. I think two meters is too low. After going out to a scrap yard there this week, I see that you really need a high fence. So is there any way of me voting in favor of this and possibly changing that after? Like, thinking, you know, how do we make those changes if, if possible? Is it possible?
Come to the panel.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
It is possible for us in the future to amend the fencing requirements for outdoor storage, specifically would be for the heavy industrial zone, obviously at this case. But as I had mentioned, it's not uncommon in other cities to limit the height of the scrap to the fence. So there are a couple avenues that we can explore and how we mitigate what the visual aspect is from the street. That would be ultimately counsel to direct staff to look into that.
No, I appreciate that, I think maybe I will probably vote against, but the, the main part of it I'm supportive of, so I just want you to know.
Through Your Worship, if I could just add, we are expecting these uses to be further, further away from anything, no residential, so they're going to be deep in a heavy industrial area where visual aesthetics become a little less of a priority. So that's one safeguard. Voting on this amendment will have no impact on all of these uses. This is very much a housekeeping amendment. We are trying to make it clear that going forward, if an applicant wants a scrap or metal yard, that shall only be in a heavy industrial use. So, and, and that's just to guide your voting for this evening, that we have no ability to impose conditions on existing businesses. We have grandfathered them so they can continue without any impact, so hopefully that clarifies.
No, I totally appreciate that, because what they signed up for at the time is what they signed up for at the time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Thomas and Pankaj. So city clerk, I will pass the motions over to you that are required this evening.
Thank you, Your Worship. Two motions required, approval of first reading by title, approval of second reading by title.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve first reading by title. Counselor Stewart and Counselor Lowe on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed, Counselor Redwan, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
And I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Darling and the deputy on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried with Counselor Redwan voting nay. Next item, city clerk. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just have to read the title, a law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, next item, city clerk.
And so next, we are now on to the twelves, business matters. Twelve point one is the next item on the agenda. It's an update on select catalytic projects and advocacy from the chief administrative officer.
Over to you, CAO, for your report to us.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening. For the catalytic projects update, I'll touch on three of the projects this evening, starting first with the schools. Good progress continues to be made on the new schools, the new South End School and the new North End School. The building permit for the North End School was approved by the city in April and construction, I understand is- and construction, I understand, is underway on Ropewalk Road. And the tender for the South End School has closed and construction is expected to begin this spring. Most notable on that site has been prep of the site for construction activity and also some work on the storm sewer system that goes through Rainbow Park. And the building permit for the South End School is currently under review. So we look to move that forward. And looking at affordable housing, it remains similar to the last update in terms of nine different housing projects currently under construction are completed for a total of 125 affordable units in St. John. Intake of the Affordable Housing Grant and half grant remains closed at this time until further notice. And the soft cost grant application remains open. We continue to receive new applications. And the soft cost grant provides $25,000 per project if the applicant has successfully leveraged the RDC preconstruction funding. As far as the Rapid Housing Initiative project, the Bear Green Residence by Kaleidoscope, project work continues there with 11% of the project completed. So the foundation is finished. And I understand Crane will be deployed to the site this month down at the Bear Green Armories, and Woodworks underway as well. And the project is still slated for completion at the end of October. And regarding the Housing Accelerator Fund program updates, the RFP for E permitting scheduled to be issued next week. And the North End Community Plan Phase 1 of the community engagement envisioning has been completed. And drafting of the plan in Phase 2 of the community engagement envisioning has begun. And lastly, as it relates to the Fundiki project, work continues on the remaining deficiencies, including some paver work and some metal handrails that are being fabricated. And the interpretation panels be one of the last items to be installed this spring. And that is it, Your Worship. Unless there are any questions?
Got a question for you from Counselor Ogden. You have a question, Counselor?
Yes. One thing I'd like you to do, CAO, if you could encourage... I've talked to a couple developers on Main Street who purchased land all the way down, right down to Robertson Square. A lot of land's been purchased. And in 1997, a group of us came here encouraging the city to get back to housing on Main Street and narrowing it. And we asked if we could put the marigolds on there and paint the murals and clean up Robertson Square. And a lot of that stuff's been done. And now, I think it was today that Main Street started, which is good news. But I've been telling people it's good news in the sense that it used to be 10,000 to 15,000 people in that area. And we lost a lot of tax dollars in the city, and then it sat dormant for 30 years. And I would like to see us go to some of those developers. Like, there's one on the corner of Chesley and Main that they cleared all the big trees last year. And now it's dormant again. There's nothing going on there. And then there's what Mark has going on from McDonald's all the way down to the former Maine brace. And then there's all kinds of pockets where former forum building... All those places are bought now. And I've talked to a couple of the developers. You know, they're all going to build apartment buildings. And I'm worried, when is that going to reach its capacity? But, and so one of them, I think it was Mark, said they were looking at maybe parking up around Medcalf Street. And so that, because people have said, can we park on Main Street? And I didn't think you could, right? There'll be no parking on Main Street, right?
No, there will be still parking.
Will there still be parking? But I think we should reach out to those developers. And because we've waited, I mean, we came here in 1997, and we've waited a long time for this to happen. And it's going to be, you know, when people see that it's happening, which is starting today, it's a good thing. But I think those developers should be reached out to and say, now's the opportunity, because that portage from Robertson Square to Uptown, which we call Main Street, could really revitalize the whole city. It's a corridor that goes right down to City Road that's never looked very pleasing. And I think we should reach out, have our staff to go to those developers and say, now, what can we do to help you? Let's get going. Because in 16 weeks, Main Street's going to be different. But it's still going to be unpopulated. And that population moving wherever it went to, the Valley or Grand Bay, was a great loss of tax dollars to the city. So I think we should reach out to some of those people. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor.
Through You, Your Worship. We, you know, that is part of the North End Community Plan. And so engaging with developers, engaging with the community, creating awareness in terms of the vision and creating the vision for that space is all part of the work that's currently underway.
I'm just, I'm super pleased because... After being here in 1997 and now today, and it's happening, it's just good news.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I've had some developers reach out to me and say, you know, this is really good news. We've been waiting for this before we set our plan into action. And I think that if I understand correctly, it's going to come out within the next few days or next week, that they'll be able to see what their vision is.
That's correct. In terms of Shape Your City, we'll be relaunching that with Main Street and having some renderings, cross-sections of what it will look like in terms of the active transportation pass. And, yeah, create awareness. And in terms of also slowing down traffic, it will have a significant impact in terms of really embracing the opportunity for active transportation along there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Ogden, you run again.
Notice there'll be no marigolds on Main Street this year because of the construction. And schools like Mr. Norton's School will be finding places to plant their marigolds, but there won't be any on Main Street this year.
Thank you. For anyone who doesn't know what we're talking about, it's so exciting because it's a six-lane highway that goes between two sets of lights in the north end. And that six-lane highway is a provincial highway, and it has 60 kilometers an hour is what you can go. The cars go probably 80 there. It has an on-ramp on Paradise Row that's like a ramp. I don't know if you're going to the Indy 500. And it has only a sidewalk on one side. And if you aren't aware of that, you have to cross six lanes of traffic when you run out of sidewalks. So it's literally where the sidewalk ends. And then, so it has a lot of issues, and a lot of housing have been taken down over time to put that road in. And that whole area's never benefited from it. And it's never, ever recovered from the loss of the housing there. So this is wonderful news for us. It's something that's been, I know, on John's agenda since 2012 when he first cut on council. And we've had students from Dalhousie planning have a look at it. And it's been, you know, we've had plans for it, and so it's finally coming to fruition. So it's pretty exciting for us. So I'm going to call the question on, oh, no, I need a mover and a shaker. Oh, sorry. Oh, I said that twice. A mover, Counsel Kellen. One more question?
Yeah, we came here in 1997, so it's not just 2012. A group of us came here.
No, I meant when we went, when we first cut on.
You gave credit there, but we came here in 1997.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kellen, you're the mover, seconder. Counselor Darling on the question to receive and file the report. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is a staff report, item 12.2, on the demolition of vacant, dilapidated, and dangerous building at 49 to 51 Adelaide Street.
Commissioner Popovoff, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. The city's Dangerous and Vacant Building Program addresses public safety concerns resulting from dangerous buildings and encourages the redevelopment of vacant buildings to help build safe, livable communities. So far this year, the program has resolved 35 cases with over 80% of those buildings being repaired and reoccupied by owners. In some cases, though, it does become necessary for staff to pursue demolition of a vacant building when it becomes a safety hazard. Before you this evening is a recommendation to proceed with demolition of a vacant building at 49 to 51 Adelaide Street. I'll now turn things over to Justin Tinker, the manager of the Dangerous and Vacant Building Program, who will provide a brief presentation on the file. Thank you.
Over to you, Justin.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Popovoff. Good evening, Your Worship, members of Common Council. This evening, as graciously mentioned, mentioning a brief overview of the Dangerous and Vacant Building Program filed before us, item 12.2 of tonight's agenda. The building at 4951 Adelaide Street is a three-story, three-unit residential building located in our city's north end. The building has been monitored by the Dangerous and Vacant Buildings Program since 2022. The building's a hazard to the safety of the public by reason of being vacant or unoccupied, by reason of dilapidation, and by reason of unsoundness of structural strength. Interior inspections revealed widespread damage, including collapsed ceilings, saturated and deflecting floors, and significant deterioration of the north load-bearing wall. The dilapidated condition of the building and the structural condition of the building's north wall are a hazard to the public. A notice to comply was issued on April 18, 2024, which was upheld by the Substandard Properties Appeal Committee last July. During this time, the owner undertook some interior demolition and did install a monitoring system. City staff engaged further with the owner's representative in August as part of a good-faith effort to avoid demolition, offering a timeline and conditions for redevelopment to proceed. These conditions included a structural assessment and required continual progress to be made toward redevelopment. A September engineering report provided by the owner deemed the building structurally stable, but does not suggest that the building is structurally sound as is. The report imposed strict loading limits, three labors, no other building loading, and also required that structural renovations take place within a year. Renos, to our knowledge, have not commenced at this time, structural renos. This indicates the structure cannot be considered sound or capable of safe, long-term use in its current condition. Variance application was submitted in December, which the owner later withdrew. By March of this year, the property was listed for sale, indicating an abandonment of plans. A compliance inspection conducted on April 28 confirmed that the hazardous conditions outlined in the notice to comply have not been resolved. Staff recommendation for the building located at 4951 Adelaide Street is demolition. The following exterior photographs, the building's conditions, can be found on pages 166 through 175 of the council packet. Photos 1 to 3 show external conditions at the time of inspection. Photos 4 through 8 show interior conditions and an improvised living space. And photos number 9 and 10 recognize the cleanup efforts made by the owners. That concludes my report, and I would welcome the opportunity to answer questions.
We do have one for you, Counselor Ogden. Your question, please.
Yeah, Justin, I don't know if you have a list of how many times this area has been cleaned, but I know that some of the owners in the area have contacted me quite a few times. And I went with volunteers at least six times for stuff that was thrown out in the alleys and out in the street. We couldn't get a hold of the owners at all, so we ended up cleaning it ourselves. And down the aisle, one night, there was a fire there, and they couldn't get a hold of the owners. But we went back the next day to clean the stuff that was out on the sidewalk. So this property has not been well taken care of at all. And it's a disgrace to that neighborhood. And I know that many of the business owners have complained about it. I think of one guy that calls me once a week because they're worried what's going on there. But it's just been a disgrace to that street. I don't, and I just wanted to make that point.
Sorry, that's it for questions from my team, I think. Yep. Thank you, Justin. So I have a statement to read first. The information which has been provided in the council agenda package includes the report of the building inspector, sorry, stating that the building is located at 49-51 Adelaide Street, PID 00374900. And states, the building inspector's report states that this building is a hazard to the safety of the public. And it is that by virtue of its being, amongst other things, dilapidated or structurally unsound. So now I have to ask, is there anyone, is there present an owner, including anyone holding any encumbrance upon this property who wishes to present evidence to the contrary, i.e. that the building is in fact structurally sound and is not dilapidated? So that would be either an architect's report, fire marshal's report, a building official, or another engineering report after September 2024. Okay, so what we're looking for tonight is the report, if you have a report.
Yeah, so there, no report, no additional report has been requested since the one that was provided in September 2024.
Okay, so we're going to go forward with this unless there's something contrary to it being structurally unsound, that you have any information for us?
The building is not structurally unsound.
Okay, that's okay. That's your opinion. But the one that we have says that it is in fact a hazard to the safety of the public. So what we're looking for...
Is that a matter of opinion? Or was it an actual, is there actual structural numbers that can be reviewed by our legal counsel and our engineer?
Okay, so there's no documentation for us, then? All right, okay. Thank you for being here, then. That's it.
Am I going to be able to have a conversation about this?
No, all we were looking for was another document that would counteract the document that we have and the information that we have. That's all we're looking for. So like this, what I'm saying here, is there present an owner, including anyone holding an encumbrance upon this property who wishes to present evidence to the contrary that this building is a hazard to the safety of the public?
So again, what document, when and what are you referring to that states that it is?
We're referring to the engineering report that would be in our kit that was from September 2024, which stated that it was structurally sound, which stated that it needed work done within, I don't know, to make it...
Yes, the work, we have attempted to put forth a proposal to move forward. We tried to comply with, and at the time that that timeline was drawn up, we told there was no way it was going to be met. We have tried repeatedly to improve that property as well as many others. We're still waiting for a report back from city staff on what is required for us to be able to get that variance approval, building permits, et cetera. So it's not the fact that we have not been able, been working on it, but the owner made the decision to put it up for sale. It is in the midst of being sold. And the person that is currently looking at purchasing it is looking at doing something with it. But our last inspection, it was still structurally sound in September of last year. We're in there at least every two weeks. We have spent $10,000 in security systems to make sure nothing happens to it. And nothing has occurred to it since November of 2023. So nothing has changed in the last year for any reason for it to be torn down now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, City Clerk, I guess I'm over to you next.
Your Worship, well, there's a recommendation in the report, so...
Okay, so I'll need to, someone to move the recommendation. We'll vote on it and see where it goes at the end of the day. Okay, the deputy is moving it. Counselor Lowe is seconding. Okay. Counselor Redwan, you have a question on this?
Just a clarifying question. Mayor Redden, through to staff. Can you just confirm documents, I think, that we were looking for would have needed to be, I think, from an architect or engineer? Is that correct? Just wanted to get clarifying.
Mr. Tinker?
Through You, Your Worship, Counselor Redwan. The wording for the letter that was provided to, posted on the building and provided to the representative was to provide evidence to the contrary.
By a certain period of time to staff?
By the time of this meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
But specifically from like an engineer or architect? I would assume somebody with...
The letter wouldn't, through, again, Your Worship, the letter wouldn't have specified who that evidence would have come from, but that there would be a level of credible evidence similar to an engineer's report, a fire marshal's recommendation, something lending a level of professional credibility.
And likely city staff information, contact information on there, if anybody knew clarification?
Every letter would have certainly my contact information as well as the frontline.
Thank you, Mr. Tinker.
All right, so the motion is on the floor. If there's no other questions, I'll call the vote on that. So all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, that's it for that one. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 15.1, under General Correspondence. This is a citizen letter regarding lack of sidewalk on Lower Cove Loop. There is a recommendation to receive this for information as area is captured in sidewalk infill strategy and being planned within the capital program.
Counselor Stewart is moving that. Recommendation and a deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
And next we have our items that came from Committee of the Whole. So the first of those is item seventeen point one, and this is a Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to civic recognition awards. The resolution would read, resolve that common council approved the list of award recipients for Citizen of the Year and council commendation as recommended by Committee of the Whole at its meeting of April twenty-second, 2025.
Okay, I'll take a mover and a seconder on the council commendation. Deputy and council commendations, council recognition, civic recognitions, Counsel, Counselor Redwan on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Next is seventeen point two, and these are recommendations from Committee of the Whole with respect to appointments to committees. And the recommended appointments would be to the Shared Risk Pension Board of Trustees to appoint David Shemola as an alternative trustee for three years, for the Civic Commemoration Committee to reappoint Misty Schofield, Carl Killen, Heidi McDonald, Jocelyn Stevens, Krista Downey, each for three-year terms, Community Grants Evaluation Committee to appoint Rory O'Sullivan for a three-year term, Fort Latour Development Authority to appoint Prince Thomas for a three-year term, and appoint Godwin Benson for a three-year term. LBR to appoint Jay Reed for a three-year term, effective May sixth. St. John Energy to reappoint Colleen Dontremont for a three-year term, and to reappoint Stephanie Bell for a three-year term. TD Station to appoint Robert Bonner for a three-year term, and to reappoint Thomas Edoi for a three-year term. Pro Kids to reappoint Alison Olson for a three-year term, and to reappoint Tamara Steele for a three-year term. St. John Arts Board to reappoint Wenme Li for a three-year term, and El Harry Bingey and Jennifer Botford each for three-year terms, and to appoint Alexandra Fernier for a three-year term. St. John Substandard Appeal Committee, notwithstanding council's policy with respect to term limits, to appoint, reappoint Donald Cullinan for a three-year term. St. John Free Public Library to appoint Mark Breen for a three-year term. St. John Industrial Parks to appoint Steve Demushel for a three-year term. And that the mayor and clerk on behalf of the city and regular members of the St. John Industrial Parks be authorized to sign any necessary members' resolution to facilitate this appointment. And finally, nominating committee to appoint Counselor Darling and Counselor Harris, effective June first, till the end of their term on council.
Okay, I'll take a deputy, Counselor Stewart, on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
And next is seventeen point three, consent to assign grant agreements, ninety-nine King Street. Resolution would be that the city consent to the assignment of its grant agreements with ninety-nine King Street, GP Inc., dated November eighteenth, 2024, April sixteenth, 2025, and April seventeenth, 2025, from ninety-nine King Street, GP Inc., to the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any documents necessary to affect the said consent.
Take a mover and a seconder. Counselor Darling, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
And the final recommendation from Committee of the Whole is seventeen point four. It's an extension of conditions on sale of three-two-four Charlotte Street, and the resolution would be that the city extend the June thirtieth, 2025, or the other, or other such date as agreed by a chief administrative officer, the timeline set out at section two point six, and the date for the payment of the deposit at section two point two of the agreement of purchase and sale between the city and J.N. Lawford Realty, Inc., dated February nineteenth, 2025, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any document necessary to affect the extension.
Okay, I'll take a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Redwan and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Excellent. Over to you, Counselor Lowe. Thank you. Excellent.